We can do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes? So we'll push the approval of the minutes down to under action items. How about that? I'll give you three seconds to read it.
Three?
Yeah. Okay, action items. We signed the payroll and manifest, and I need a motion for the chair to sign the I work service agreement, which is the new highway department software.
I'll make a motion, sign the I work agreement.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. We have a letter of hire.
No, no.
That will, right, that will be next week. I'm waiting for the department head to get back to me.
Okay, so we'll move that to next week. All right. Did you read that?
No. I'm busy.
Okay, so while you're reading that, we will have Captain Cormier come up and discuss the disposing of municipal vehicles. No, it was the cruiser and disposing of municipal vehicles. Those are two things, right? Yeah. Do you want to combine both?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tuesday, Ellen.
Thank you, Bob, and Ed just came in.
You won. You won, right? When Ed was getting in.
I said 5:15. There you go. He's got his lunch.
Evening, board. Thank you for having me on the agenda tonight. I just wanted to ask the board for consideration on a couple encumbrances and also consideration to hopefully be able to replace the 2018 police utility vehicle that's in the fleet. And so I'll start with that. The, I got a quote from the same company that we purchased the Ford utility vehicles last year, and they had offered with that a trade of $6,000, but put the total at $27,833 or 21. They also have some 22s coming in as well. And the status of the 2018 is it's about 85,000 miles. It's right now needing two catalytic converters and some other equipment that puts the estimated cost of repairs at about $4,000. And so we were looking at maybe trying to do it in the next budget, but if the board was to choose, they do have vehicles in stock right now, and it could be something that, you know, we could take out of the remaining funds in this budget if the board was to approve that. So I just did a little bit of homework and research just to see what that would look like. I know that, you know, the book value on that vehicle is a little bit higher, so, you know, we don't have to trade it in. If there was a private party sale that, you know, was interested in purchasing it, we could certainly do that, too. And I know we're looking at doing that with one of the Humvee vehicles as well, you know, and that money could also be used towards, you know, the purchase of the new vehicle.
Okay, so that's what, that's what we're looking at right here, Captain?
Yeah.
This is for a new, an additional cruiser, right? And then you're looking at a $6,000 trade for the 2018 or both, or what?
Yeah, so Colonial Motor Group, when, when we purchased the vehicles last year, we had them give us a quote on what the trade would be if we traded a vehicle in.
Yeah.
So we sent them pictures, the mileage, and the details on that 2018, and they said that's what the, they estimated the trade value would be.
So is it six just for the 2018 or is it 2015, too?
No, just for the, just for the 2018.
Okay.
And they have mass state bid pricing, and so the police utility vehicles that we got last year, it's the same vendor, it's Colonial Motor Group, and they're, they said they would have one in stock if we needed to get one sooner. Then below that, we have the duty vest and uniforms. So this line is actually talking about the vest that we would wear, like our concealable body armor, but the vests that we're looking at would also be able to go into like an outer carrier as well. And right now, some of the officers' vests are expired, and some are gonna expire in this next year. So we will have to replace the vests either way. And by looking at the type of vests we're, we're going with, they can wear it over their uniform or under their uniform. It's not a vest that would necessarily stop rifle rounds. It's a concealable body armor, level three. But we got a quote from Emergency Outfitters in Manchester on that. And so we thought that that also could be a strong consideration for encumbrance in something that we would need to do if we didn't do it this year. Would have to put it in the budget and do it next year. And then...
These aren't already line items in your budget?
Yeah, so the, the duty vests that usually we budget for maybe replacement of two or three a year, but this would be to upgrade and replace seven vests essentially. And right now, either all of the vests are gonna expire this year or are expired. And so it's an opportunity to, to go with an outer carrier vest where a lot of officers are choosing that to get some of the weight off their back, their lower back. And it gives us an option where we can either wear it under our uniforms or over. The trend right now is to wear them over the uniform and try and have some of that gear, the heavier gear, up higher on your body. And so these vests would actually come with carriers.
What's the life expectancy on these vests, the current ones you have?
Five years.
Five years? And the new ones is the same?
Same, yeah.
And what's the difference in price on both, you know?
They run, typically the vests run between $1,000 and $1,200 a vest, and that's whether you buy them as a concealable vest or get them in a carrier package. And...
And they're fitted to each officer, correct?
They are. These type, these type of vests are fitted. They come and measure each officer. They could be repurposed with another officer of the same size. You know, we've done that before, too. Both officers left, and they, you know, they were similar to me in build. They could wear the same vest. But they do come out and measure everybody. And...
Anybody, any, I'm sorry.
Yeah, typically with departments, you know, our size, it's not uncommon to have a couple expire each year. And...
Anybody new? Have they been given a new vest? Or have they got something that's about to expire or been expired?
There, there were given vests that were kind of upstairs in storage, so they're expired or about to expire would be the answer.
Nobody's been given a new vest?
No, the, yeah, the last two people that I know of were Sergeant Ryan and Officer Valentina. In Sergeant Ryan's, I spoke with him. I know his is gonna expire in this next year.
So the new officers, do they normally get the vest once they complete their classes? Or what is the standard for...
So the minute they start riding in uniform, we, we put a vest on them. And usually we do have some in the buildings. But if they're expired or gonna be expired, you know, we try to get them fitted and into a vest. There's kind of a lag, time delay when you get a new officer to get them fitted in a vest. Once they get fitted, it's about eight weeks before we get that vest back. And so typically, it's hard for the best manufacturers to keep up with us hiring new officers. And so we usually have a couple on hand, but they're just to kind of get us through until the new vest gets in. And then the, the last item there is taser cartridges and the body worn replacement cables. So that's the cable that goes from the battery pack to the camera itself. They start to wear out after time. And so this last quote covers training cartridges and duty cartridges for the tasers and then replacement cables, and that's the $750 total.
How often are we replacing those taser cartridges? Because I've heard it seems pretty frequent.
Yeah, I mean, you have to put officers through the training once a year, and each officer is supposed to fire a training, a cartridge in training, and then if they have to deploy one actually on duty. And so you have to buy some every year for training, no matter what. But they, they typically keep as many cartridges on hand for training as you do officers, and then have some to replace the cartridges that are expended during the year for a taser use. And again, we don't know from one year to the next. You might have five deployments one year and none the next. You just don't know when you're gonna have.
So cartridges were included in the increase in the budget because the, you know, almost, they're asking for $6,000 in that general supply line for taser cartridges. So you're looking to reduce that line by $750.
Right.
E15, seven?
610.
No.
Under crime general supplies.
Okay, I'm looking at the taser. Okay, that's the contract.
Yeah, taser cartridges is what we're, we're talking about.
Yep.
So if you were, if you were to encumber the money out of this year's budget, if they had it, we would reduce that $6,000 by $750. And then vests, I think we need confirmation on if there was a cost associated for vests in the budget.
And that's fine. The police budget actually has enough money left to go ahead and just get these, order these products right now and still be well within their budget. So that's what I would suggest. Don't even encumber it. Just purchase it. I already have, I believe, the invoice proposal on the vests for $7,500. Yes, so that's, that would be my suggestion.
Okay, so someone have a motion? So I'll make a motion that we authorize the police to purchase the items listed using their budget.
Not the vehicle, right?
No, including the vehicle, but is a caveat to that, and that is not trade in the Explorer, but to look at fixing the Explorer and then trading it in for the full value, and then also the full value of any other thing that can be traded in, such as the Hummer or whatnot. That would go replenish the general fund. The monies would go to the general fund, correct?
My only suggestion with that is that in the police budget, there isn't a line item to purchase vehicles.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they don't even need another vehicle right now, do they?
We'd keep it separate.
Okay. So then the motion would be to authorize the police to get the duty vests and the taser cartridges. And then we'll have a separate discussion, I guess.
Second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So then if we can reduce the new budget by those amounts, find out what was budgeted for for the vests, and then the $750 for the supply line. And then as far as the vehicle, what is the wish of the board to, we'll discuss it first before we even make a motion, I think, so we don't have to withdraw anything.
I'm just thinking that we do have two vehicles that are eventually gonna start costing the police some money, the 18 and the 50, both of those. And those two vehicles alone right now are worth some money. So if we can, if we can get enough money for those two vehicles for the purchase of a new vehicle, then I think it's a good idea. $6,000 is gonna apply for those two vehicles, you know. One, I've already looked them up on, you know, on the internet, you know. One of them's booked at 28.4, the 2018, and the 2014, 15 is booked at 13.36, $40,000 right there. I know that those numbers on, you know, those are gonna vary probably quite a bit, but those are a heck of a lot higher than $6,000, so...
Now, is this outfitted as a police vehicle?
No, these are just for the regu, the regular, yeah.
But I, I think, I don't know if...
You'll be stripping all that out of there, right?
Decrease as far as, because of the, they're not wrapped like the new ones are. So they're actually, everything's painted in, so you're gonna be looking at removing that. I'm just wondering, is there a separate tip of market for that, or do you have to go to specific dealers for police vehicles?
No, I mean, we could try and, typically we trade them or auction them, but we can try and, you know, sell it ourselves. Certainly, we could do that, too. I know that the Charger, their estimated trading value was 3,000. So you're right, what, much lower than what you got for book value, you know. And I know we're in the process right now of getting ready to do that with one of the Humvees vehicles, so we could certainly do the same thing with the 2018 and try and get the most money we can for it.
I think we should. I mean, you know...
They have a KBB instance, yes, because they're paying well over above market value right now, a lot of vehicles. And you go right to the dealership and we put the check in there.
And those two vehicles aren't heavily marked. They're pretty much unmarked vehicles. I mean, there's probably one sticker on the door.
Keeping in mind that the 2018 won't pass inspection until...
We put that money in.
$4,000 in repairs are done. So that would...
Or we sell it as is.
Oh, we sell it as is.
With the notified repair, or the notification.
So, I mean, we're talking a deadline of 12:31, so...
No pressure.
We have one more meeting next week, so... Something that can be done.
All right.
We need obviously answers by the next meeting.
Okay.
That sound good to you?
Sounds good.
So you have here a sale of unused taser cartridges.
Yeah, so that, and that was something that already occurred. So that money just comes out of it. We gotta check the 250, and that was, that was a part of the old model. I think they, they actually sell them back to Taser, I believe.
Oh, do they?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think, I think that's it.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow, can I have anything else from you?
Can't wait.
Were you able, were you able to find anything on the Humvee? I know we asked Chief to do it, but he probably hasn't gotten around to it. He's on vacation now, so that's not gonna happen, right?
And then I was overseeing that, so...
Maybe that's something that can be looked up, too, in the...
Exactly.
KBB Jeep dealerships or something, right?
Okay.
Of course, not with the price of gas.
Thanks, Captain.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain.
So we have those notes. So we're gonna go back to the approval of the minutes. I'll take a motion for December 14th.
And we'll wait for the minutes for December 14th.
Second.
Ed hasn't read them yet, have you? The minute, did you read the minutes yet?
All right, so we're gonna move that a little later.
Like, can we get it tonight?
All right. So before we get into the budget, we'll do any miscellaneous information or any public announcements. Does anyone have any announcements they'd like to make? Merry Christmas, everybody. I just wanted to say, commend the Wayne Santos and Kate Crery and the people that were at the elementary school running the vaccination clinic. It was very smooth and well done for the people that wanted to be vaccinated or get the booster shot. I believe there's another one coming up January 7th. I think, I wanna say, they're gonna try and do it January 7th, so. But it was very well run, and I didn't see a lot of tears, except for Jason, no more. And I will say, I don't know who the captain was in, from Alton, but he was doing the shots. I was just like, I'm gonna look, no, I'm not. I'm gonna, I'm not gonna look. And then I looked, and he's done already. I was like, I didn't even feel that. It was just like, I'm like, can I have you do all my shots? So it was very well done. Okay. So, Ed, you ready to go through the budget?
We're gonna fix that.
All right, so we're gonna let Ed read the minutes for a couple of moments, and then we're gonna...
Do we have more to go through from this?
No, because we're gonna do, all we have right now is public input, but I wanna do that after we go through the budget and just touch on quick spots to see if anybody has any comments about it.
Okay.
After we vote on it. But we'll let Ed read the minutes. Well, there, we either have the minutes or we have the budget. Okay. Okay, we're gonna go through the budget. Seeing as we've already reviewed most of it, I think Karen, if you could just highlight any quick changes that you may have made. And then what we're gonna do is we're gonna vote on the, each, like 4130, we'll do a vote on the bottom line.
Yeah, the only thing that I might suggest, too, is maybe not to vote on a number because between now and the final public hearing, things usually come up. We usually change, have to change some figures that every week with the budget committee...
Vote on the object.
Yes. And so some of the changes were, I reevaluated electricity, heat. So you'll see some of that. I updated the fire rescue so that their figures were more in line with the boards. And I think basically, basically, the figures remained the same, other than that.
What about on the police line, 2-660, were we gonna change that? On vehicle repairs?
Change it how?
That's the one we discussed, right?
That's the one we talked about. He's got $10,000 in there for vehicle repairs that we shouldn't ever have.
Right. Right. Last year, they, the budget was $12,000. If you want to reduce that, the 10, we went down to $10,000. So if you want to reduce that even more, absolutely, you can...
We need any of it, do we?
Yeah, you need $4,000 of it if we're gonna fix the Explorer.
And if we're not gonna fix it, then we don't need it, right? Oh, it's a lot of money, $10,000 in there. We got one, two, three, four new Cruisers, five. There we got over there. I think we got five.
And four.
Or three.
20 or something.
Right.
The other ones are new.
Two, two, 2021s, and there's one, 2020s, there's three, right?
That all came in last year.
Yeah, yeah, those three.
I think we can cut that at least a half.
So we've used, like, I got my numbers right here, 9255?
Yeah.
Out of 12,000. Looking for 10, and that would have included most of the year with the old Cruiser.
Yes.
Right?
A lot of repairs last year.
Yeah.
The delays in getting the new ones and everything else. I get that. We shouldn't be anywhere near this.
So the question's going to be, so we have a 2018 that will not pass inspection without $4,000 worth of repairs.
He still has three that we can, 35, actually. Right? Nine, 10, 11, 12. Almost $3,000.
No, because we're only requesting 10 this year. Well, the request was 10, so you'd be looking at maybe cutting it in half or 6,000, cutting 4,000 out of it, for example.
He had $12,000. He spent $9,000.
Right, but he's only requesting...
Now he's asking for another 10.
He's only requesting 10. He's not requesting 12.
I know, but it is all right. $3,000 in there is what I'm saying.
But I mean, it's, I know, I understand it's less than level, but yes, we have three new vehicles, but we also have the police chief's car and the 15 and the 18. So you have to take that into account. So maybe 6,000 would be a doable number, or seven, cutting 3,000 out of it.
We're gonna need to fix the 18 if we don't get rid of it, right?
Yeah, and that's 4,000. That was the estimate that they're seeing.
If we, I'm just saying, if we don't get rid of it, we're gonna have to fix it. Or even if we do get rid of it, we have to fix it, right, to get more money for it?
I understand all that. I mean...
Before you can get rid of it. I don't think you can get rid of it.
Of course you can.
Yeah, you can.
Get rid of it with the check engine light on. Oh, oh, all right.
Close it.
Yeah. So you could reduce that by like 4,000, for example, comfortably, I think.
That would make it six, and then the three that's there would make it nine. Right?
We're talking about it. What do you think?
He's not asking for 12. He's asking for 10.
He's asking for 10.
We have one vehicle, the 2018, that needs $4,000 worth of repairs right now, today.
And he already has $3,000 in his budget for that repair.
Oh, is there $3,000 in there for that repair?
There should be. He only spent nine.
$2,745.
Where does, where does he have 3,000? Oh, you're talking about doing the repair this year.
Right. To use the money that's there. And he could even over expend that line because, as I said, his budget will easily absorb that if he wanted to do that repair this year.
So then we, next week, we can talk about it, encumbering it if they, it has to be repaired before they consider trading it in.
Right.
And then because we have that, we should be able to knock that 10 right down to five.
Sure.
In case there's a problem with his vehicle.
Right.
And the 15.
And the 15. But hopefully, we can get rid of both of those vehicles without spending the 4,000, and they don't still have $5,000.
Make a motion.
Well, I think we have to know what's gonna happen with those other two cars then first next week before we...
Well, it doesn't matter. We still have the money to repair the cars anyways.
Well, I think it matters how much we're gonna reduce it if we're gonna...
Well, I think we should probably at least make a motion to encumber the 4,000 for repairs. And if we don't need to do it, the money goes back anyways. So if you make a motion to encumber the $4,000 out of this year's budget, then you could be more comfortable cutting... So if you make a motion to encumber the $4,000 out of this year's budget, then you could be more comfortable cutting next year's vehicle repair budget, because you already have the money set aside to repair it.
Okay.
So someone needs to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we encumber remaining balance on the vehicle repairs, right, towards the repair of the 2018. That's 1 motion, right? And then we make another motion.
We have to finish that motion first. So there's 3,000 in that line right now?
3745.
It's only, let's see. Yeah, I was going to say, not 37, right, 27.
It'll be 2745.
2745.
Although it would come out of that line, I mean, it is bottom line. Okay, so the motion will be to encumber out of the police budget $4,000. Or I would say not to exceed 4,500, hopefully. It couldn't be more than that, right?
Not to exceed.
4,500?
Yep.
Is that fine, Rick? 4,500?
Sure.
For vehicle repairs?
Sure.
Okay, for a repair to the 2018. Do we have a second on that? Any discussion? And again, we can revisit this to see if it's even needs to be done, if they can do the trade-in or whatever.
I'd like to get rid of both, I really would, and just get a new one, but.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now your motion is going to be to reduce the 2022
Request budget.
Budget to
5,000, right?
Okay, so we have a second on that?
A second.
Okay.
I'm not going to reduce him with 10,000 that he has here.
So the motion is to reduce
Just to 5,000.
2-660 to $5,000. And Rick made the motion, Gary seconded it. Is there any discussion on that? Is seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. So let's go back to the beginning so that we can
We've been through this one 3 times.
Okay, so under Executive Office 4130. We're not going to vote on any amount?
Correct, and you still have to discuss pay raises, a position possibly becoming full-time, so all that would be in non-public.
Yep.
So I'll keep that in mind.
Okay, so if you are okay with 4130, I will take motion to approve 4130 as presented at this time.
So moved.
Do we have a second? Finished looking at it, obviously.
Diane, what is your final figure for selectmen recommendation?
And actually, I have some suggestions for raises that would change these numbers.
For us? Give it a shot.
Sorry, excluding the selectmen's salary. So I would just, you know, ask you not to vote on a bottom line until after you have discussions in non-public pay.
Right, so which is why I'm asking for an approval on as it's presented now. How about, how long do you think the non-public is going to take, Karen?
It shouldn't take probably 20 minutes.
Okay, then then I'm going to make a recommendation that we actually go and take care of the non-public and then have a firm hand in what we're going to recommend on this budget.
Unless you wanted to handle public input in case some people did not want to wait.
Okay.
Not.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is a very odd night, because it can't vote on a bottom line.
Right, right.
It's like, if the budget's not ready, then we shouldn't be voting on it this week.
Exactly.
Right.
Why don't we not vote on the budget tonight, and we'll vote on it next week when we have firm numbers after our non-public?
But we can discuss tonight, right?
Yeah.
Non-public?
Absolutely, you can discuss it.
We'll finish the non-public.
Yeah.
We're going to vote on the spot of budget next week.
Right, I think that's a good idea, yes.
Okay, all right, so seeing that, we're going to open up public input.
Hello there. I just wanted to
Excuse me, what's your name?
I don't remember, I have amnesia. Margaret Cipriano. I just wanted to make the board aware that I sent Karen some documentation that I promised that I would have this week about Lock Lake. I did get clarification from the state. DES, New Hampshire Fishing Game, and Marine Patrol all have jurisdiction of Lock Lake waters. Lock Lake has jurisdiction of any of the Lock Lake amenities around it. Private owners have their own access to the lake, so it is private access, it's not public access, but it is considered part of New Hampshire State waters. When I spoke to the head of DES, Dan Bureau, who was also in charge of the waterways, he stated that he was going to clarify this with the biologist who was conversing with Ed Nester. She has waffled back and forth on her position. After he spoke with her, I got an email from her stating the exact same thing, that New Hampshire has jurisdiction of the waterways, that we are eligible for all of the grants. Because we are private access, we are at a lower level on the list, but that does not mean you do not, you're not eligible for the grants. You are still eligible, you could still apply for them. So I wanted to make that clear, but I gave a packet to Karen filled with a lot of the information. One of the things that was stated last week was that in the past, before the Barnstead Commission got involved, Lock Lake did their own chemical treatment, which is true, and we did it through the same company, Solitude, and a few other companies, but we had to put permits in with the state, which Ed said we never permitted, never had permits. That was not true, and I gave examples, I didn't give, I had examples from 1990 through to this year, that they were always permitted chemical procedures, but I gave just examples of ones that we went through. I also gave the example of how we did not apply for the permit for Purcella Core in 2018 and 19 that we went through with the commission, and Solitude applied for the grant, I mean, for the permit this year, because this past year, because we were not on the list at town meeting. Lock Lake worked with Solitude ourselves, and so our Lake Health Committee Chair, who's Steve, he had his name on the permit, the permit application. But we have worked with the commission, we do have that paperwork. I also sent in emails between Ed Nester, myself, and Steve, emails between Ed Nester and Amy Smigula from the past, some history, and then the commission, I wouldn't call them minutes, but summaries of their meetings and what they had stated they were going to do through Barnstead. For example, they had said that they received so much money, and they had at $1.50,000 for the year to work on treatments of the lakes and the river, and that one of the things they wanted to do was to mitigate the lilies in Lock Lake and I don't remember the other water body. That never occurred, but that was in their summary, that one of the things that they were going to do. So I just wanted to make it clear that we have worked with the town in the past, we have gotten permission from the state. We do have a private access lake, but the state does have jurisdiction over our body of water, and they do agree that the mill foil that happens in Lock Lake will end up in surrounding lakes, excuse me, in surrounding lakes and rivers and streams, not just from boats that may pick it up and take it to another place, but when it goes to seed and goes downstream. So our goal is to be a part of the program and as taxpayers, hopefully that we could gain some of the funds that are there and that we're not left out. We do want to work with the town, we do want to solve this. It's our biggest asset in Lock Lake, and it's an asset for the town of Barnstead. If Lock Lake becomes a swamp, as some people call it, I love my little swamp. If it does get overgrown and like Brindle Pond become where you can't put boats and stuff in it, that will greatly reduce property values, and that will affect our tax base. So that's where we're coming from, and we do have a vested interest, and I just want you to know, yes, I was a little emotional, I was jumping out of my skin, but you have to understand, I am the president of the association, and I am an advocate for our community. So that's what I wanted to state. Thank you.
So we were told you could not apply for grants, you're telling us you can?
I have it in an email.
Okay.
Yes, I have it in an email, thank you.
And you have your permits that you've already applied for, or no?
We have the permits that we used for the Purcella Core this past year, yes. All our permits were applied for and accepted by the state for all of the treatments that we have done in Lock Lake. And we have the records of that, I sent in some samples. I didn't get, if I gave in everything that we had, it was a box full of stuff that we had, that we went through in our archives.
The town has given Lock Lake 6,000?
6,000.
Every year?
Not every year.
When did we do that?
In 2019, we had a representative from Lock Lake who went to the commission when we found out that the other lakes and river were getting monies towards the mill foil litigation. That representative at that meeting advocated for us to get some of that money. It did go to town meeting, and it was voted on, and we were included in that, and yes, we were reimbursed the $6,000 out of $22,000 that first year. And then the next year, we got $6,000, I believe, out of $18,000 of work. Last year, so that was 1819.
We didn't have anything 20?
I didn't think we did anything on 2020. I know that when we did the Purcella Core treatment, they were waiting to see if it worked. And then last year, we were not put on that permit, so we had to do it ourselves. Solitude did a much smaller area, and we put out $12,000 of our own money, and we did not get reimbursed because we were not on the permit, and we were not in that warrant article. Okay, so twice, I believe, we got reimbursed.
But there were several years before that, that Lock Lake colony for sick got $6,000 a year.
I'm talking about the Purcella Core treatment, the one that they're doing now.
But for mill foil as a whole, the town has supported you in mill foil by giving 6,000 towards your expenses.
Yes, the town has done that, but for this, this particular treatment, which is the most expensive, that's where we didn't get the reimbursement last year, and we're trying to make sure that we get on the warrant article this year so that we are eligible for it with the rest of the lakes. And I know that Ed Nester has, his big project is Sun Cook River, and that he's been working on this, and if you go back in some of the summaries from the commission, you can go back to see that he was working on it many years ago, and it was a 5-year plan, and it didn't get done, and it was pushed, and it was pushed. And so he has a goal to get that cleaned up, and I do get that. But we have a goal also, and in areas where we had Purcella Core treated areas in the lake, this past year, when, after we did our treatment and the diver went around doing a survey of the lake, there were mill foil plants, again, in some of those areas. They were mill foil plants that probably went to seed, because we have tributaries coming from other areas. So up on North Barnstead, not by the marina, but by the North Barnstead Beach, in between that and Varnie, there's a tributary that comes down, it's loaded with mill foil, and that comes into our lake. So that's another issue that has to be looked at, but we want to be a part of the commission, we want to have a say and be represented. Okay?
So it sounds like, I'm sorry, it sounds like an important step is to make sure that when we go to town meeting this year, that you're included, like you have been in the past, except not.
We would like to be included in the discussion, absolutely.
If I could just add, last year, I believe it was closer to $40,000 that we were asking for in mill foil, and town meeting only passed 20.
Correct.
And so that certainly added to, to this whole issue. It wasn't that you were purposely left out, it was, we wanted a lot more money, and we didn't get it, so then they
And Sun Cook River was a priority.
It was, right.
The warrant article for the 20,000, and he tried to amend it at town meeting up to 40,000.
Right, because I had asked him for a final figure just before we did the warrant, and, and you're correct, he gave me that final figure, but we had already posted the budget, so he tried to increase it to include all the extra stuff that he wanted done, and it didn't get passed.
He needed more money to do Sun Cook River, because if he wanted to do cutting, he wanted, there was a lot more that he wanted to do there besides the Purcella Core treatment. And that was the main reason that he wanted that increased.
Yeah.
But like I said, we want to be included in the discussion, and we want to be represented.
I wasn't here, obviously, to ask last week, but
It was interesting.
I did have the same question, and I know 2020 being the first year of crazy COVID, that they weren't able to meet with all the parties from the various lakes.
No, the last summary I have from our records is 2019 was the last time the commission met. Now, Ed said that they met recently, but he said that it was the Sun Cook Lakes people that met, and his secretary was in charge of it. I don't believe that Half Moon or Lock Lake were involved in that. Lock Lake definitely wasn't, and I don't think Half Moon was involved in that. I don't know if it was an official meeting, we were not notified of the meeting.
I think what the board had requested is that all the parties get together in a car, and obviously that didn't happen.
Right, right.
Something that maybe
Well, maybe it can start happening.
Yeah, I think Steve reached out to Ed with your number and email and everything, so.
And Ed did email us back, and I, I would like you to read his email, okay, all of you, to personally read it.
Did you send it to us?
Yes, yes, he did. He sent it, Amy Smigula from DES has sent everything, so, and then along with everything that Margaret sent in, nothing came in on time to be on this agenda, so there's a lot to read.
I got a response from DES on Friday, and I knew I had to give Karen this stuff by Thursday for it to be on the agenda, so obviously it couldn't, so I wanted to give her the folder, so you could take a look at it. I do know that some of the things that were stated in the past have now, the opinion of the state has changed, so. And it, it may have been because I went above Amy, who's the biologist, and I went to her boss, and I spoke to him at length, and then he contacted her, and she contacted me. And we straightened out a lot of what was being said, and in the past, she said, well, it's a man-made lake. She had, this is what she spoke to Ed with, and I think I do have that email in there. That, you know, well, Lock Lake is a man-made lake, it's not a, you know, a water body that we manage or regulate, but Amy Smigula comes on our lake, or not her, but her, I guess you would call them her minions, her worker bees come on our lake, and they do testing, they do, they don't do the state testing for chemicals that they used to, because they don't do that in most places now, because they cut back, but they do do other testing, and they have weed watchers that come, and yeah, they inspect for the mill foil and whatnot, so they do come on our lake, so.
Every year you have some kind of bacterial problem over there?
Everybody does.
Okay.
That's cyanobacteria.
You guys are getting the biggest notice on it.
Well, because, because we have the most people that use the lake.
My question is, okay?
Yes.
Why? And what do you do about it?
So it's cyanobacteria. One of our problems is that we are a shallow lake, and we are filled with nutrients, especially phosphorus. And those nutrients, these cyanobacteria breeds like crazy, and Winnipeg had cyanobacteria issues this year.
I'm asking about what?
No, but I'm saying, so it's happened everywhere. It happens everywhere throughout the state in August through September. Lock Lake, in the last 3 years, has had more of an issue. When I first moved here, we didn't have an issue. Lock Lake, in the last three years, has had more of an issue. When I first moved here, we didn't have an issue at all. Part of it is because of the shallowness of the lake, part of it is because of the runoff that comes into the lake. We are very diligent with overflowing septics. You can ask Bab, I am talking to him constantly whenever we suspect somebody's septic as overflowing, because that's a big issue with our lake. We also put out information about not using phosphates in your fertilizer, you could use other fertilizers without phosphate. You could use lime on your lawns, it would help you protect your lawn against the geese also, because they don't like the lime. But, private citizens, what they use on their lawn, or their landscapers use, it's very hard to regulate. And that's one of the issues that we have, the other issue that it's, it is shallow. So we have been begging the state since 2007, they started the dredging question, to dredge areas of Lock Lake, to bring it back to what it was, because we have a thick amount of muck. In some areas, it's over five feet, and that, how many?
Over five feet.
Twenty.
Twenty feet of muck.
So our lake that used to be 10 to 15 feet on average is, in some areas, two or three feet deep, and I think the deepest is what, eight to 10?
That's right, that's the dam. The average from both lakes is four.
Yes, feet. So, it is, it is filled with muck, which is decaying leaves and, you know, all the matter that comes into the lake. And, we have been trying to get the state to work with us about dredging. They don't like the word dredging, so we are working with them. Some of DES says, yeah, you should be able to dredge, you should be able to clean this out. Other people in DES are not for dredging because they feel that we're going to disrupt the natural environment. So, you know, we, we have been pushing, we have a lot of people working on this, but it's going to take some time. We don't want our lake to become like Brindle Pond where it's just overgrown with weeds, because when you have all that muck, it's the perfect environment for all the weeds to grow. So, that's where we're at. So, that's what that cyanobacteria is. It grows with, it's nutrient-rich, lots of sunlight, the water has to be warm enough, so it usually happens late August, early September. This year, it was all over Facebook because we have a lot of new members in the last, you can see the properties that sold in the last two years, and they thought that Lock Lake caused, you know, like, we personally, the association, caused the issue. It happens everywhere, but it was a big issue with us this past year.
That's the blue-green.
Blue-green algae, yeah.
I have it actually in a lot of lakes.
They have it in, just about every lake in New Hampshire has a problem with it. Half Moon saw it, but it didn't bloom because they have deeper waters. They had a lot of the spores and stuff.
Anywhere with deeper waters, there's, doesn't
Right, because the sunlight doesn't penetrate it. So, that's the issue, and that's the problem with having a shallow lake.
We, obviously, as board, want to have a chance to review the stuff
Yes.
that you've presented, but we would like to also try and get the parties together to mitigate this. We do have time because it is a warrant article. So, we're thinking perhaps the first or second meeting in January to give no back and forth between parties, if we could convey that as well.
In the meantime, yeah, I mean, I, I think the party should be getting together, talking about your plan for 20, for 2022, you know?
Maybe you could, Karen, encourage Ed to have a meeting so that, before we have to have a warrant article.
You know, we were a little surprised that he said he had met recently with some of the other members, and, you know, we didn't get any notice. The, the thing with us is that, like I said, we want to be represented and we want to be able to, you know, be a part of it. I do have a question about the funding, so he stated in one of his summaries that, I think, I think it was 2019, they had $50,000 in the coffers, and that they were using it for different things. Who approves what they use it for?
Well, town meeting certainly approves the expenditure each year. And then, it's what he presents each year, so he usually will tell you how much he has to submit invoices before the trustees or trust funds will pay anything out of that.
Right.
We can only pay by invoice, and we cannot pay any more than what passed town meeting. So, certainly, we have, you know, all those records. But he, he will submit all the invoices. He usually meets with the board and gives us the whole plan of, you know, what takes place, and then Lock Lake Colony, as you know, in order to get the 6,000
Right.
you have to, and you certainly spend a lot more in
As, as do all the other lakes and the river, you know. My, my one question was about the financials, was because he was talking about the DASH program
Right.
with reimbursing for the divers and the dive boat and the drivers, and we never get that. That's all out of our pockets. So we were never offered that. I, when I had a meeting with Half Moon, a couple of months ago, one of the officers had said, well, I said, you know, you don't have any issues with mill foil, and they said, no, not really, but, you know, Ed brings the divers over here, and I said, well, how do you raise the money for that? You only, you know, you have, I think, a $15 a year assessment over there, and they don't have, everybody on Half Moon is not in their association. And they said, well, we didn't pay for it. And it didn't click back then, but I guess it was part of the DASH program, so they got the money for the divers to go in and look for it, and we have never gotten it, and that's a concern to me. I just want to make sure that it's being fairly, you know, distributed to, to everyone.
I guess my question on that with Half Moon is, is the town of Alton also is there any money in for mill foil as well?
I don't know.
Because half the lakes, well, the majority of the lakes actually in Alton, I think.
Yes.
So I'd be curious if they are also, if that, if the town of Alton
Because their representative, their representative lives on North Barnstead, so they are on the commission. There is a person who represents them on our commission.
The commission is probably who is approving the invoices to be submitted to the town, is that correct?
Yes, and any monies that are reimbursed, they have through the grant, and certainly, it's not 100%.
Right.
Maybe 20%. So, all of those monies that come back, go back into that fund. So, it's not, monies are not paid out to any other town or diver, well, the divers are part of that.
Well, because they submit their, yeah, I do understand they submit their invoices.
Yeah.
But my question was just because we had never been offered to have, we use the same divers.
Yep.
And we pay out of Lock Lake's pockets for the divers, we've never been a part of the DASH program where we get reimbursed, and the other lakes and the river, and, I mean, I don't, the river doesn't have an association, do they, the Sun Cook River?
No.
No.
No, so it's the Sun Cook Lakes Association, and then Half Moon and Lock Lake, and, you know, and Ed did say, will you, as a private lake, when he kept calling us private lake, raise funds, but we really don't fundraise, we just have our assessments, which pays for, to run the business. You know, so this is just, it's like the town, you know, just a piece of it.
So, in the meantime, we can try and have a little back and forth.
So, I'll have Steve contact him and
And then, you know.
So, part of your, the dues, none of that goes towards mill foil? I mean, typically, like the town, if we have to raise money, we would have a warrant article if you
So we have a budget that, that the members have to approve, and in that budget, there is lake health.
Perfect.
There is a, a budget item, lake health, and the mill foil is part of that.
Good.
Yes.
Okay.
So we do have a budget item for it, but we don't go out and fundraise just for that situation.
So, we'll plan on, first or second week of January, obviously, because we want to make sure that we get the correct amount for the warrant article.
Yes, and I would just strongly suggest the committee, this is the purpose of the two committees or three committees, to get together and, and then come up with a figure to come back to the board.
Right.
So the board should not have to be the committee.
Referee.
You guys have that scheduled, or are you going to work on?
Nothing's been scheduled.
Because there's not, yeah, that's not a lot of time.
Nothing's been scheduled yet. I mean, Ed took his information and just had the one email to him, and that was it, so.
Right. So, and now that you have the newer information.
Right, and you'll have right up until the beginning of February before we have the final public hearing to add money to that budget, so if we can get a figure before the budget's posted, we'll get it in.
Then perhaps
Yes.
Let us know.
Yes.
When you want it. If there's an issue.
Okay.
If not, hopefully, you guys can come to an agreement, and then what is presented is presented.
Okay.
That everybody agrees to.
Right.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Any further public input online? I will take a motion to go into non-public under RST 91-A, colon, three roman numeral, two, C?
B.
B. Okay, Ed. Rick.
Hi.
Gary.
Hi.
Diane, yes, Paul.
Yes.
Yes, we're in public. Thank you all very much, and Merry Christmas.